All right, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of January 13th, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Powell.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present.
Elder Walker did let me know ahead of time that he wasn't gonna be here. Moving on to Agenda Item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Hyvee, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Captain. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain Hyvee. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Elderwoman Larson, second by Elderwoman Zazada. Any comments or questions on that?
We haven't yet.
I don't know. Can you guys hear us?
I hear you.
But not through the speaker.
Check one, two.
Jeff?
Jeff? Ooh, there we go. All right. Get on my late night DJ voice.
Tess, one, two, Tess.
Good call there, Alderman Smith. All right, we've got a motion and a second for approving the agenda. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zazada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six hi.
The agenda has been approved, as is. Moving on to Agenda Item D, presentations. So, hello, Alderman Powell. We, the city council wanted to call out what happened on December 22nd and wanted to take a moment to recognize just a lot of amazing people in our community. So for those of you that might be sitting in the audience that aren't aware, but we had a significant fire at 1024 Hillcrest, which is affectionately called Trifrat. There are three buildings there. I think it's 924, 930, 930, 934, 1024 are the three. And there was an inferno, I would say, at least when I arrived on the scene, seeing what was transpiring. I'm gonna go in now, no particular order, but I'm just gonna recall it as I saw it, right? So I arrived on the scene and saw, it must have been about seven different fire companies. Chief, you would know what the final total was, that had arrived from all over the community to attack the blaze that was happening. And again, I've seen our fire department in action. Now, we're obviously the lead when something like that happens in our community. And for all of you out there, if you ever doubted there's a fire in your home, apartment building, commercial building, you have one of the best-trained fire departments out there to be able to respond. When I walked up to what is incredibly chaotic-looking scene, also what I experienced was incredible calmness from our leadership. In fact, the chief, when I walked up, he's just like, "Evening, mayor." And I was like, "So what's going on, chief?" First thing he said is, "Everyone's out and they're out safe." Wow. That's a, that was the number-one priority, right? And they absolutely executed on that. And then it was the coordination of all the resources that were out there. I think it took at least two, three hours to put out the flames, chief. At least that's how I recall seeing it. If you can imagine multiple ladder trucks, multiple teams, everyone trying to respond. What should have been absolute chaos and no one knows what's going on was one of the most orderly productions I've seen. So, chief, I want you to pass it on to your team. I would say on behalf of council, you all crushed it. I mean, absolutely crushed it, especially when it came to life safety, number-one priority. Buildings are buildings. They can be replaced. People can't. And our fire department did an absolutely wonderful job at that. So huge kudos there, chief.
Thank you.
And then, as the night played out, the first person I called was a woman named Mary Hess. And guess who picked up her phone? Right out of the gate, Mary Hess. If you don't know her, Mary Hess is the DeKalb Township Supervisor. Someone that I know is great in a pinch, can handle emergencies, and the DeKalb Township has a lot of resources for those that are gonna be displaced. And we knew, this was just the beginning of it, we knew there were a lot of families in that particular building, and we need to start calling as many resources as possible in order to help out. So Mary Hess says, "I'm on my way." So how cool is that, right? "I'm on my way." So then, everyone's starting to park in the church parking lot, Westminster Church, because they're watching the fire. And so we reached out, city staff reached out, and the church offered, "Hey, we can be a place for all the families to come, gather, get out of the elements, get warm." And as soon as I pulled up into the church parking lot, there was already a representative there. Now, they're waiting on keys to get into the building, right? But I already had water and everything. So it was really cool to see so many people running around the parking lot, checking in on everyone that's there, "Are you a tenant or not?" And to be able to make sure that they knew, "Look, give us a few minutes. Church is gonna open up. We'll get everyone in there. And then we can start communicating on next steps." Because those in the audience, I know there's some people that live in these apartments I'm talking about here tonight, those in the audience, if you can imagine December 26th, and you've got nowhere to live at this point. You don't even know what's going on if you can get your stuff back, right? So then I reached out to Family Service Agency and talked to Tanisha Kleg, and she said, "Already on it. Riley is on her way." And so it was really cool to, two of our core social service agencies are dropping everything they're doing on a Sunday night, it was a Sunday night, Sunday night, to make sure their resources were out there, including translators, to make sure that every resident of that apartment building knew what was going on, knew what options there were for them immediately, and then also long-term. And the Family Service Agency and the DeKalb Township really stepped up. I gotta mention Ken Barrios and Casey Bochachin, Bochochin, sorry, from the township, and Family Service Agency Riley Luke Skis. Yes. And Tanisha Kleg were just instrumental on immediately finding out what we needed to do. So, okay, so this is all happening, right? Church opens up, we all roll into the church, all the residents start rolling in. And I think we spent about an hour getting lists together of who lives where. The landlord provided a list of all the tenants. Some of us got on the phones and started calling people just in case they weren't aware that they might have been at a holiday party. And guess what? Your apartment, you're not gonna be able to get into. We worked with the fire department and the police department to get people from like 9, I'm getting the address wrong, 930 and 934, to be able, if they could, get back in and at least get some of their belongings, right? And then it was really the question of, the church is providing water, they're firing up the kitchen. We had a lot of announcements that are happening. And the Red Cross rolled up. Anyone from the Red Cross here? Well, the Red Cross rolled up too, which was great. That was Emily Burrell, I think. And we started coordinating what's gonna happen, because this is late. This is eight or nine o'clock at night. And so we needed to find some hotel rooms. And it was really cool. We're calling around, and, but I'd be remiss not to say Alderman Walker's there as well, trying to help coordinate some things. And we reached out to the Red Roof Inn. And Vicki, I see you back there, right, Vicki? So Vicki's trying to figure out how she's gonna house everyone that night, right? And what was really cool, at one point, I left the church, went to the Red Roof Inn, because I wanted to make sure the residents were able to get housing that night. And Vicki said, "I don't care about what the circumstances, I don't care who they are, I don't care what they need. I'm giving everyone keys and rooms." That was it. Like, it didn't matter. Rest of the stuff, we'll work that all out later. Right now, we have an immediate need in our community. And, sorry, Vicki was just great on that. So why I'm probably getting emotional on all this is, I saw it from our fire department, I saw it from the township and FSA, I saw it from Vicki, who came in, who was not working that night, came in to make sure she could help facilitate. Everyone had a warm bed that night. And then the church that came out in force to make sure that all these people were taken care of. That's DeKalb, in my opinion. That's exactly who we are. And that night, I think everyone absolutely showed it. So just wanted to recognize the township especially, FSA especially, the Red Roof Inn, Vicki especially, American Red Cross, and Westminster Presbyterian Church. Y'all crushed it. Super proud of you. And I know in a pinch, all of you would be there as soon as I make, pick up the phone and make a call. So thank you very much. City manager, I don't know if you have anything to say?
No, sir. Except that, on behalf of our staff and all the departments that were engaged that night and have been since, we wanna thank the people who are, you called out mayor, and people who are in the audience, and people who are home tonight doing other things, taking care of their families, that pitched in and helped along the way, some in little ways, some in really big ways, but all the ways counted. So grateful for that.
Definitely. Yeah, that's a great point, because a lot of people came in, dropped off checks, did everything they could to help support, get money for food the next day, days, helped with housing, all that. So if all of you don't mind, those agencies, well, first of all, any agency here that would like to come up and make a few comments on anything I might have missed? Yes, Riley, come on up.
I think you did a great job of acknowledging all of the agencies that showed up, but I do think you missed Maggie Alpelle Jennifer Yokum, who I think she was supposed to be on medical leave, but she still showed up and was there on-site more than most of us.
Jennifer Yokum is city staff, and she helped coordinate, especially after that night, all the resources that happened. Jennifer, you're not missed. I'm a little emotional. I have a list of agencies I'm trying to thank, and you and I are part of the same agency. So that was, that was a miss on my part, but doesn't diminish my god, the amount of work that you did. So thanks for calling that out, Riley.
Yes, absolutely. Beyond that, the community that showed up with donations, monetary, food, and everything in between, we are incredibly grateful for that. But I also want to point out the resiliency of the residents. The day after the fire, they were meeting with us and had action plans, and they've been in the same position of creating their action plans ever since, whether they are housed or not. And I just think that's incredible.
Thank you, Riley. Anyone else? Mary Hess, Township Supervisor, come on up to the mic and say a few comments, because you were instrumental.
Thank you for this volunteer opportunity. It, I was as emotional as you that night to see us come together and the next day, that next morning, by 6:15, I'm on the phone with Panera, you know, going there, going to Dunkin' Donuts, going to Jewel to make sure that we could have breakfast for the people, because we knew at noon we were, Riley, Sunday night, had sent out an email to all agencies saying, "We need to get you to the Red Roof Inn by noon on Monday to help share resources." Tremendous turnout by social service agencies, the grocery stores and restaurants that supported it that next day to get food, and the Red Cross, Jennifer Yokum, thank you for everything that you did. I just, you know, I, the fact that it was Christmas, things were thrown together to try to make the best of the circumstance for the families that face this devastation, and I too am equally proud of our community.
Now, I know the residents here that went through it, it wasn't as full of lollipops and rainbows as we're making it sound right now. And I know there's a few of you that wanna speak later on, and I'm really looking forward to hearing your comments. But just wanted to make sure that, in the spur of the moment, we recognize the people that really worked hard to try and make this such an incredibly lousy experience, as good as it could be in light of the holidays and all that. So I do have an ask. I think it's really important to take pause, like we are right now, when events like this happen. I would love to have all the agency people that are up, all the resident people that are up, and I'd love to do one big photo op, just to document an important come-together in our community. So if y'all wouldn't mind, anyone that was involved in the fire on December 22nd, please come up to the front here, and we'll have Scott Zach just kinda take a picture to memorialize it, okay?
Yep.
Come on, Riley. Yes, anyone that was involved?
I'm just, yeah, I'm talking to Joe Trina.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
I guess we are.
Oh, wait, 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 we gotta come together like we like each other. Yeah, yeah, let's group in here, take the picture from here. Yeah, some over here.
I'm in front of you.
If you can't see Scott, he can't see you, so.
All right.
you know, we had a couple events not too long ago that involved our officers having to be deployed and in the spirit of, well, not spirit, they were deployed to make the public safe. And Brian Bemis Automotive Group was one of the institutions in our community that was subjected to some horrific violence. They had a perpetrator in there who brandished a knife, attacked personnel. Someone was wounded in the process, and it appeared like this was not gonna end. So if we can all imagine, we're in our workplace, and someone walks in like this and starts attacking everyone there, I can't even imagine what it's like to experience something like that. And what I wanna do tonight, because I heard it from our police officers, I heard it from city staff, is I wanted to recognize the Brian Bemis staff for, in such a horrific event, I'm gonna say you all maintained your cool, even though I know it had to be pretty chaotic, but you all focused on each other, you all focused on trying to de-escalate, you all focused on working with our officers when they rolled up into Brian Bemis. And I can't say enough about the amount of courage something like that takes. And I commend you all for being able to, in light of those particular circumstances, keep your cool together. And I definitely wanna say, I mean, we had great response from our police department and fast response, but I think the situation probably would have been a lot worse if not but for the staff at Brian Bemis and how well you all conducted yourselves in an event like that to try and, again, protect each other, try and de-escalate, and try and make sure that no one else in your organization was hurt. So I did want to give a round of applause to the staff at Brian Bemis. And just so I call out the names, and stop, or correct me, Amy, if I have missed one, but Nick Ramsey, Brian Maslowski, Chad Hooton, and Sean Mulhern? Yes, all right, awesome. Again, I'd love to take a moment, Scott, if you wouldn't mind, if Brian Bemis staff wouldn't mind, come on on up. We'd love to just get a picture with you all and commemorate the actions that you had on that day. So come on up. doesn't have another agenda item, you are more than welcome to leave. Yeah, we don't expect you to stay through the whole meeting, at all. It could become quite the honor here in a little bit. All right, so I have a lot of speaker requests, and I think they're in a couple major, well, a couple categories. I know Safe Passage, I know Frankie, I put you down as my grenade, but I think it's a bigger conversation, right? So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna call up Safe Passage first, then I'm gonna call Frankie up. And what I'd ask is, anyone that filled out a speaker request form that wants to follow Frankie on that topic, let me know. And then I'll ask if I forgot anyone in the process, because I think, oh, I don't have the residents. I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna have you guys go first. Whoever was a resident that night that filled out a speaker request form, wants to talk, we will do that, and then I'll move on to the other categories, if that's all right. So did anyone who was a resident of the Trifrat property wanna come up and speak? I could be wrong on that. All right, hearing none then. All right, so then we'll do Safe Passage. And I think it's Beth Ganyan? Yes, come on up, Beth. And Beth, as a friendly reminder, you have three minutes. I have to hold everyone to three minutes.
Don't you worry.
I'd love some people to be a little longer, but I'm not allowed to, essentially.
I timed it multiple times.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Barnes and members of the city council. My name is Beth Ganyan, and I am the Prevention, Education, and Communications Manager at Safe Passage. And I reside on Augusta Avenue, right here in the city of DeKalb. I'm here tonight to address a critical issue that affects the well-being of our community, its domestic violence and violence against women. It is essential that we unite as a community, not only to prevent domestic violence, but also to ensure those impacted have access to the resources they need. It's concerning that even in cases where domestic violence has resulted in death, local officials and organizations are not prioritizing the availability of many supportive services. Safe Passage provides 365 days a year, 24/7 in our community. We need to see local law enforcement work closely with Safe Passage to implement the lethality assessment protocol, ensuring that survivors are immediately connected to lifesaving resources. DeKalb High School should also partner with Safe Passage to provide students with crucial information on domestic violence, sexual and dating violence, and safe technology use. Furthermore, it's time to stop calling Safe Passage the women's shelter, and instead recognize that their many services are open to everyone. We must make it clear to our community that no one is alone and that help is available. The CDC reports that 41% of women and 26% of men experience domestic violence at some point in their lives. Sadly, domestic violence is one of the most underreported crimes, with nearly 44% of cases going unreported. We cannot allow this to continue. As a community, we must take a stronger stance against domestic violence and violence towards women. Safe Passage has been a cornerstone of support and service in our community for over 40 years. It's crucial that city officials and the public recognize Safe Passage's commitment to serving all survivors of domestic and sexual violence, regardless of gender, sexual orientation, race, or any other factor. Their services are free, confidential, and available to anyone in DeKalb County. Safe Passage will be hosting a women's rights rally this Saturday, January 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. in front of the DeKalb County Courthouse. I urge everyone to attend and show their support for survivors of domestic violence. It is time for us to stand together as a community and declare that we will not tolerate violence against women. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. All right, Frankie DeChacho.
Good evening, council. It's nice to see you all again. I'm Frankie DeChacho, and I'm a resident of DeKalb. I'm here tonight because this is the final city council meeting before inauguration day, and it felt important to come out and publicly talk about how life may change for many vulnerable communities in DeKalb on January 20th and thereafter. I'm queer, in case you couldn't tell. I've worked in queer advocacy for a while, and I pay close attention to the challenges and threats to queer people locally and at the state and national levels. I worry a lot about queer kids. Statistics show that LGBTQ+ youth face higher rates of suicidal ideation and attempts, higher rates of domestic abuse and homelessness. I worry about pending Supreme Court cases, including one about access to health care for trans youth, a challenge to the ACA's coverage of PrEP, a drug that has helped reduce HIV transmission significantly, and an effort by Idaho Republicans asking the Supreme Court to overturn marriage equality. I worry about federal and state legislation and guidelines. In the 2024 session, state legislatures introduced or advanced 576 anti-LGBTQ bills across the country. The president-elect has promised to cut funding for schools that include lessons on gender and sexuality, and Congress is considering a bill that would target trans and non-binary student athletes. I worry about violence. We've seen armed militias shut down drag brunches and storytime events, and in 2024, at least 32 trans and non-binary people were murdered in the U.S., most of them black trans women. I worry about how gender and sexuality compound other marginalized identities to make life even harder. For example, trans individuals experience unemployment and hunger at higher rates, and fewer queer kids who are black and brown get the mental health services they say they need. I also worry about challenges facing other communities, and so I stand in solidarity with all those underserved and marginalized communities whose futures are uncertain. I know there will be attempts to divide us, but I believe that we are stronger when we work together. I'm worried, but I'm also hopeful. Our community has turned out to help plan, execute, and enjoy queer-focused events in the past, like Pride in the 815, queer clothing swaps, film screenings, and a Queers and Allies blood drive with lots of drag queens. That was a good one. I've seen the city support DeKalb Pride, which has been critical to the event's growth and success, and the mayor's Pride Month proclamations have emphasized the contributions of queer community members. While many of the challenges that I've laid out here can't be resolved by this council, I do believe the city has an important role to play moving forward. We're going to need leaders to stay informed about the issues, to exercise empathy and compassion, and to courageously work to meet the needs of vulnerable residents, and I look forward to working alongside you as we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Frankie. All right, so I have a few, well, quite a few more here that I'm gonna go through. Actually, well, how about this? Anyone else, I'm looking at Dylan, Denise, Angelica, and Janine. Oh, hi.
Hi, I'm Angelica.
You're Angelica? Perfect. Is it following Frankie's topic?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, go ahead. Remember, you have three minutes, Angelica, and there's a timer for your reference as well.
Thank you. Dear council members, my name is Angelica Mendoza. I use she/her-your pronouns, and I am the proud resident of DeKalb. As a daughter immigrant, I've inherited a strong worth ethic from my parents, who made countless sacrifices to provide a better life for my siblings and me. My father worked as a gardener while my mother took on multiple roles as a housekeeper, elderly caretaker, and factory worker. Both retired this past year and are now enjoying their well-deserved retirement. Since 2010, I have been actively volunteering with immigrant rights organizations, working alongside undocumented immigrants to advocate for human rights. As we face a second Trump administration, I'm reminded of the fear, anxiety, and grief that our undocumented immigrant community endured during his first term as president. Despite these resurfacing sentiments, I remain hopeful for the DeKalb community. As many of you know, the city of DeKalb was founded by an immigrant, Baron John DeKalb, who became a hero to laborers in the barbed wire industry. Over the years, I have witnessed many residents come together to proactively address the challenges faced by undocumented immigrants in DeKalb. For instance, due to community efforts, DeKalb passed a welcoming proclamation in 2018, affirming that our city will continue to be a welcoming place for all residents, regardless of national origin or immigrant status. Additionally, several community-led organizations, such as Welcoming Western Counties and newly established DeKalb Migrant Aid, have been created to support undocumented immigrants. These groups, along with others, demonstrate that we value and care for our undocumented immigrant neighbors, and they are welcomed here. As a result of these acts of love from our community, I believe that our care for undocumented immigrants and others with marginalized identities will continue to grow among DeKalb residents. At the end of the day, I would like to remind everyone here today that we are all human beings. beings who deserve to live with dignity and human rights. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Dylan Kethrow? Welcome, Dylan.
Thank you.
Remember, you have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. It's my first council meeting, so thanks for having me. Hi, my name's Dylan. I use he/him pronouns. Good evening, everyone. Buena noche, salaam aleikum aleikum salaam. I am here to talk a little bit about mental health. I didn't have time to write out what I wanted to say, so I'll keep to the two minutes, or 2:50. So, I'm a social worker. I'm a clinician for Northwestern Medicine, and so I see kiddos. I'm a youth therapist, and I see families struggling every day with mental health. And as we go into a new administration with new policies around public health, education, healthcare, healthcare changes, I know directly that's gonna impact the kiddos that I'm working with, and I already know also that we see a huge disparity in the amount of kids that I'm seeing based on race and ethnicity. For example, we still have huge gaps in access to service, particularly for black children. Black children are two to four times more likely to be misdiagnosed with ADHD, depression, and things like that, when really they might be struggling with something like PTSD, bipolar disorder, and/or autism, or all of the above, right? And so, what that means for the council is that I really love being in DeKalb. I've loved being here for the past two years when we moved here. I think that there's been a lot of really good public-facing approaches to dealing with the multitude of social issues that we're confronting. As we go into a new administration, I would love to see continued efforts and community efforts around bridging gaps in mental health services, making it more apparent where to go if we're looking for services, making sure that we're outreach to different populations around the city that might not be as well canvassed, as well resourced in terms of education, in terms of transportation, right? Resources directed to folks who might not otherwise know where to go for services. And so, I stand before you all today to really think about, how do we continue to do the good work that we're supposed to be doing? And as my colleague said as well, to make sure that we're thinking critically about how incoming policies are gonna be impacting the folks that we love and care for here. That's all I really had to say.
Thank you, Dylan. Appreciate it. Hey, Dylan, are you familiar, I assume, with Deanna Kada from the DeKalb Mental Health Board?
Sure am.
Fantastic, okay. Great resource to connect to, yes. All right, then I've got Denise Salihulu. How was that? Horrible?
It was really good.
Was it?
I've got enough for you.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just a reminder, three minutes.
Yes, hi. Hi, I'm Denise Salihulu. I'm the director of Barb Food Mart. We're a nonprofit food pantry that serves students in the DeKalb School District. And I have a statement to read that I've composed with our board president, Dr. Jessica Knoll, who couldn't be here tonight. We share the previously stated concerns about the implications of the new administration. Specifically, we are worried about funding cuts that will cause an increase in food insecurity in DeKalb. The president-elect has threatened to cut social service programs, and if this transpires, it will hurt the families that we see at Barb Food Mart that are already struggling. And we know that the child tax credit and other programs implemented over the last four years have dramatically reduced the number of children living in poverty. Yet, even with those nationwide trends, more than two-thirds of students in our communities are still considered low-income. In the next few years, we may see this number grow, and more than ever, we need to be prepared to step up to help families stave off hunger. And we truly appreciate the support we receive from the city of DeKalb, from our community in the nearly 12 years since Barb Food Mart was founded. And we look forward to continuing and growing our partnerships to make sure that all students can go to school with full bellies, ready to learn. And finally, we do stand in solidarity with these other speakers and community groups against any attempts to divide us. We are stronger when we all work together, and we believe in the strength and generosity of this community that we are so proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. And thanks for the work of you and your team. Incredible organization, and I know you guys do a lot of amazing good. All right, Janine.
Hi, my name is Janine Sostak. I'm a DeKalb resident of over 20 years, a four-time NIU alum, mother of four, District 428 alumni, one of them is a senior in high school. I want to speak to you today about some things that have recently come to my attention from members of the community, both through social media and personal conversations that I've had with people. Firstly, I love seeing all the celebrations and connections that are being made between NIU and the city, so that's amazing. And I was in the bathrooms a little while ago and saw the signs on the backs of the doors with all of the typical banned books, things that were there. That was really cool, too. I love hearing from people I've never met about how they or their students are really excited or interested in coming to NIU because of all the things that NIU stands for. And I love knowing that my family, my people, my friends will be safe when they come to the city of DeKalb. I've witnessed city employees coming together in amazing ways. I think I emailed you and the fire chief about a particular situation. I've seen, had a chance to speak with several individuals from both NIU and DeKalb's police departments about some of the really amazing positive things that are happening, proactive things that they're doing that don't always make the newspaper or social media. There are, however, of course, other less positive things that are not making it to social media, too. The number of people who are afraid of what's to come, people who are afraid of losing health insurance, losing accessibility, losing WIC and LINK, losing their rights, people who are afraid of being deported, people who are afraid of being the target of domestic violence, of being assaulted verbally, physically, sexually, for simply existing. I have friends and colleagues who are making actual plans to move out of the country because they are so afraid they will become the targets of violence and will be forced to conform to new rumored rules. I have friends and family who are afraid to comment on social media posts, even on their friends' pages for fear someone will come after them. There are parents and partners and siblings and children and colleagues and neighbors who are worried for their loved one's safety because they have a person who has a disability, belongs to the LGBT community, they have daughters, they're single moms in a strange world where women's rights seem to be evaporating. My own daughter, who I know you know, gave the keynote at her DeKalb High School graduation in front of thousands of people, and she was afraid to come here tonight because she's afraid her voice doesn't count anymore. That's why I'm here. In the background, keyboard warriors are out in abundance saying horrible hateful things to complete strangers. I'm excited to see others stepping up to challenge them, too. But when people are afraid, they lash out, and what happens when people clash and that escalates? As a community, we need to do more to prevent this. I urge you to consider ways to make, more ways, to make the residents of and visitors to DeKalb and NIU feel safe in their surroundings, considering offering low or free-cost self-defense classes like RAD, that rape-aggression defense course that NIU had offered at one point to the community, to consider sending at least one female officer and/or crisis counselor in cases of domestic violence or rape, to not work with ICE should they come to town, to continue to immediately investigate and remove any graffiti, to host additional events in the winter months. I know that the Pride event is amazing in the summer, and we're working on a disability Pride event, and it's all these really great things that are happening, but things in the winter that can help bring people together, to build bridges, to show people that they truly belong and are welcome and safe here.
Thank you, Janine.
And I know this is a, we're timed?
We are. And it kills me to do this.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
But there's some people in the community that will hold it against me, and I have to. I would love to just keep listening to you talk.
Yeah.
And I think we're checking a lot of those boxes in the city of DeKalb, but as you know and we all know, there's more work to be done, for sure. All right, then I have Riley. You wanna come back up, Riley?
Are y'all tired of hearing me yet? So my name is Riley Vokeskeese. I'm here on behalf of Family Service Agency's Community Action Program, representing the low-income and unhoused individuals of DeKalb. Our executive director, Tanisha Clegg, sends her regrets for not being able to join us this evening due to prior commitments. However, she fully supports the message that I'm about to share here today. So first, we want to thank the city for its ongoing support of organizations like Family Service Agency, Hope Haven, Ruda for Good, Safe Passage, Voluntary Action Center, and others. These organizations are vital in providing food, housing, and other critical services to at-risk populations, especially during challenging economic times. We are here tonight to share concerns about the potential impact of reduced federal funding for essential programs that many of your constituents rely on. For instance, cuts to rental assistance programs could significantly reduce funding for initiatives that prevent homelessness, leading to increased housing instability and rent, I'm sorry, rent hikes for low-income households. Additionally, there is a proposal to cut $220 billion from SNAP over the next decade. If enacted, these cuts would make it much harder for families to afford food, worsening hunger and food insecurity across our community. Here in DeKalb County, as you might know, 15% of residents live below the poverty line compared to a national rate of 11.1% and a statewide rate of 11.9%. These numbers underscore how deeply our community could be affected by these proposed cuts and why it's so important for us to address these challenges together. We also want to emphasize that as of today, these cuts have not taken to, have not taken effect. However, we are actively planning to ensure that we can continue to meet the needs of those that we serve. Finally, we are also here in solidarity with the other speakers. In difficult times, unity remains our greatest strength, and we are confident that the city will continue to be a space for fostering collaboration and supporting our most vulnerable neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Riley. And last, I have Martina Fleming. Martina, you have three minutes. There's a timer there to help you, too. Or you can see it on the TV over there.
Okay, I'll make this very quick. Good evening, everyone. My apologies for my tardiness. My name is Martina Fleming. I live at 930, well, did live at 930 Greenbrier Apartment 15. I was one of those many affected by the fire, and I have other residents that are here, but I'm gonna speak on all of our behalf. All right. Good evening, members of the city council. Again, my name is Martina Fleming, and once located at 930 Greenbrier. I am held on behalf of the fellow tenants and request your support in reviewing and addressing the current state of the building under the ownership of, the owners of the terraces at DeKalb. Also, I don't know, I can't think of it, but think of another name as well, sorry. Our request from the stems from the ongoing neglect, mistreatment, and unsafe living conditions exasperated by the recent fire that renders the portions of the property uninhabitable. Our lease agreement explicitly requires that they maintain the premises in good inhabitable conditions as outlined in the Illinois Code and Tenant Act, Section 8 in lease agreement, addresses fire-related damages and restore hability promptly per Section 9 of the code. Also, but also on, under the Illinois laws, including Chapter 10 of the City of DeKalb Code of Ordinance, landlords are obligated to provide safe, habitable housing, neglecting fire repair, and exposing tenants to hazardous condition constitutes grounds for local government intervening. Also, under 10, Section 10.17, the DeKalb Code prohibits criminal nuanced activity. The persistent issue at our building indicates a failure by the landlord to maintain compliance with multiple codes. Tonight, I'm urging you guys, we all deserve to have a safe and dignified living place. I want to thank the city members that have been there for us, such as Jennifer and Kimberly. Thank you, Riley. Thank you, Bill, for speaking up for us when we were unable to speak up for ourselves. I know, not only just for me, but for others that went a long way. But I urge you guys to see, if people are not following these codes that you guys have set in place, it don't just affect them, it affect many of families, many of children's, and it's a lot, it's a lot to burden. So if you guys could, if they're not gonna uphold the code that you set in place for them to be owners, maybe we look into different ownerships, or we void their rental until they're able to comply.
Thank you. Well said. On that topic, too, I'd be remiss if I didn't call Alderman Powell for meeting with city manager and myself and asking the question, what more can we do? And that man asked that. So we are looking at that right now, what more can we do? We've made a lot of progress as council with a lot of landlords that we have in our community, and we've really moved the needle forward, but it's not enough. So what more can we do? So those conversations have already started, ma'am. We'll work on it, I promise. All right, let me situate here. All right, so moving on, oh, by the way, public participation, what? Yeah.
I'm Kendra Holden.
Oh, what's your name?
Kendra Holden.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kendra. Yes, come on up. I had you miscategorized. I'm sorry.
Hello, Mayor Barnes. Hello, members of the council. My name is Kendra Holden. I'm a co-founder of DeCarbon DeKalb, a local nonprofit that fights for climate adaptation and community engagement. I'm also a longtime resident of the city, and I'm here with my son, Jack, tonight. Similar to several of the speakers before me, I'm also deeply concerned about the implications of the coming presidency. In particular, I'm concerned about the potential global, national, and local impacts of electing a climate change denier to the presidency for a second time. More specifically, I worry about President-elect Trump's Secretary of Energy nomination, Chris Wright, who has stated publicly that climate change does not exist. He's stated publicly that there is no such thing as clean or dirty energy, and he's profited off polluting our planet and endangering our health and the future of communities like ours. 97% of scientists believe that climate change is real, and they believe that the burning of fossil fuels on our planet is directly impacting the devastating, deadly, growing-in-scope storms and tragedies that we're seeing right now as LA is still on fire. A rapid transition to renewable energy is essential to prevent further warming on our planet and to curb and adapt for the future. And in addition to climate and health benefits, transition to renewable energy has huge economic benefits for the residential business and municipal buildings that undergo those transitions. It could really bring money into our community where we really need it. I do appreciate the city's support for this prior to now, through the commissioning of the CEC a long time ago, through the passing of the Climate Resolution Plan in June 2024, and through the dedicated action that we've seen since then, as the plan has been distributed to city departments, where we've seen changes like, maybe we don't have to put as much salt on our streets, and maybe the building codes should include EVs. And we're seeing that change, and we acknowledge it, and we thank you for that. And we hope to see much more of it. I look forward to working with you in the future to ensure that this community continues to be served as we fight for climate adaptation and we learn what the future will look like for us, for me, for my son, Jack, and for our grandkids one day, hopefully, who will love the city as much as we do. Finally, I do stand in solidarity with the other speakers and communities who are here tonight, because there will certainly be attempts to divide us in the future. We are stronger together, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. This was great. I think this shows DeKalb, right? Our diversity, but our willingness to come together, talk, vocalize. So I want to commend each and every one of you for coming out tonight. Your voices are heard up here, I have no doubt about it. So I'm really looking forward to having a wonderful 2025 and working with so many of you. With that, those that spoke, you are more than welcome to leave at this point. We're moving on to our regular agenda, which I don't expect anyone to stay for, so please, we'll give you a minute to head on out and enjoy your evening. And again, thanks for coming out tonight. I'll give him a minute. Good night, Martina. Things are coming out. See you, Vicki. Thanks again for everything.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item F, appointments, we have none. So moving on to Agenda Item G, consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the special city council meeting of December 2nd, 20, yeah, we can't do that. This is an open meeting. December 2nd, 2024. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 9th, 2024. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through December 23rd, 2024 in the amount of $3,153,504.12. Number four, accounts payable and payroll through January 13th, 2025 in the amount of $2,995,215.29. Number five, investment and bank balance summary through November 2024. Number six, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through November 2024. Number seven, Freedom of Information Act report, November 24. Number seven, Freedom of Information Act report, November 2024. And number eight, Crime Free Housing Bureau report, December 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada? Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, public hearings, we have none. Agenda Item I, considerations, we have none. Agenda Item J, resolutions. Number one, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero one, authorizing an FY 2025 funding agreement with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for tourism activities from January first, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2025. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a first of four grants before you tonight. They were approved as part of the FY 25 budget, which began on January first of this year. And this particular grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for tourism activities is a, an important grant for a number of reasons. One is that every municipal dollar is matched by a dollar from the Illinois Office of Tourism, and through the very strong leadership of the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is represented here tonight, we have been able to land on a regular basis year in and year out, a number of key events, not, not the least of which was a group that we honored here a little bit later in the year. Last year, the IESA State Wrestling Champs and those who have participated. But CVB markets these events through a variety of media, and the list is very long. The city has, since 2010, been a regular funder of the Bureau, and we recommend your support this year.
Counsel, questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Larson.
The three people, Courtney, and Brad, and Catherine, they don't just market.
Yeah.
They, and it's marketing DeKalb, but they are out there at all these different conventions getting these state athletic events to come. That brings everything from hotel rooms to gas stations to restaurants, and, and they're out there promoting DeKalb, because every other little town in the state of Illinois is trying to get these, and they keep coming through for us, getting everything hopping in DeKalb. And I just can't say enough for the, the staff that put that together.
Any other comments or questions?
I agree. I've been invited to some, I went to some, I haven't, but you guys are everywhere. I love what you're doing.
Any others? Yeah, understatement of the world, that they're everywhere. You all are everywhere. I, I, I mean, I think I go to a lot of stuff, and usually I'm running into one of the three of you every time I'm there, because you're there representing the CVB, promoting whatever the event is. So can't say enough about return on investment, the amount of, of return that we get with the small staff that you all have is, is incredible. So please, 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 keep up the great work. You're doing an amazing job. And if you all haven't seen the video they created with Brad Hoy, highly recommend, you gotta go on to their Facebook page and see this video, because it'll make you snort. It's so funny. So really appreciate all the work that you all do. Hearing no other comments or questions, a roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero one passes, and you all are more than welcome to exit stage left.
As much as we would love to say.
Yeah. And actually, I should, did you want to say anything, or are you good? Like, if you want to, you're more than welcome to come over to the mic.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right, you bet. Have a wonderful evening. All right, moving on to Agenda Item J two, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero two, authorizing an FY 2025 funding agreement with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, DCDC, in the amount of thirty-five thousand for economic development services beginning January first, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2025. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Sisada, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As I point out in the background, DCDC, as it's known, the acronym for DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, was founded in late eighties. The City of DeKalb was one of the several founding members and remains a member that's represented on their executive committee. And I attend on behalf of the city on executive committee level, the mayor, and is an ex officio member of the committee, of the corporation, I should say. The corporation's role is many faceted, but what really particularly helps us is it's a clearinghouse, it's an initial point of contact for industrial and commercial prospects. Got a couple calls a day from the new CEO. Are you interested in this particular project? And this is a conversation that was also a three-way conversation with the State Department of Economic Opportunity. In addition, the organization is, under state statute, the administrator of the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone, which of course comes into play whenever we're talking about incentives for industrial types of development. And there are a lot of other things that it has done over the years, and also helped in a different way to market the county outward across the country and across the world, really, with its branding initiatives. So we, we have substantially benefited from the data they, they generate, from the contacts that they deliver to us, and we recommend, again, to support them at this level.
Comments, questions, council?
Yep, on the board, I don't even know, probably over ten years now, and I've seen firsthand just the impact that it's had. But a couple years before I became mayor, I was president of the DCDC, and Bill was my vice president. And to see Bill in that role and having the ability to leverage the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation for all the corporations that reach out, and I think the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity as well at the state of Illinois, economic development corporations are their first go-to a lot of times. So they're looking for counties that have those. That's their primary contact, and then it goes down into municipality level. And to see Bill in that role and him working with the board and having his finger on the pulse of all activity economic development-wise that's coming to the City of Kalb and DeKalb County has been a direct result of why he's been able to bring so much economic development here. So, and that organization has a new executive director. She just started.
Last November.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Wonderful person, and I think is gonna do an amazing job in that role too, so, yep.
Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero two passes. Number three, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero three, authorizing an FY 2025 funding agreement with the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of facilitating community events beginning January first, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2025. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith, city manager.
The city sits on the Chamber Board of Directors in an ex officio capacity. As, as you know, this, our, our board in particular is interested in promoting local tourism and has had a very special focus in promoting our downtown through a number of events, the farmer's market, the Santa arrival, which wasn't too long ago, and, and other downtown events. We have funded them at the level of thirty-five thousand dollars since 2019, and recommend on behalf of our staff that we continue that level of support.
Counsel, questions or comments? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero three passes. Moving on to number four, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero four, authorizing a payment to the DeKalb County Community Foundation on behalf of the DeKalb Municipal Band for services beginning January first, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2025 in the amount of forty-one thousand and eighty-eight dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson, city manager.
Oh, it's not news to the council, maybe to some people looking in tonight, and if people in the audience, that our band has performed continuously for a longer period than any other municipal band in the state of Illinois. In, in 2022, the, the band established a pass-through fund with the DeKalb County Community Foundation, which is very generous with, with smaller not-for-profits who were trying to encourage private donations but don't really have staff to help them with that, and so it's a pass-through for the band. What's in our budget for 2025 is forty-one thousand and eighty-eight dollars. That's what was in the budget last year. This is a great investment, so we recommend that we maintain that level of funding for 2025.
Counsel, questions, comments? Pretty cool stat.
Yeah.
Longest standing band in the state's history. All right, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two-four dash zero zero four passes. Moving on to number five, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero five, authorizing agreements for aviation and storage tank liability insurance coverage effective January first, 2025 through January first, 2026 in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Sisada, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in late November, the council acted on our larger insurance packages, namely the annual liability and workers' comp coverages. And we said at that time that we would come back in January when we get the premium notices for two of our smaller, but still important, packages, one namely aviation and, and activities at the airport, and our storage tank liability insurance for our fueling system that we have at the Public Works Garage. So you see the numbers there, they haven't changed much in the last year, but we need your support to nail this down for another year. Recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero five passes. Moving on to number six, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero six, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, and the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study, DSAT, for the purpose of determining mutual responsibilities in the metropolitan planning process. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisada, seconded by Alderman Smith, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in the middle of 2024, the FTA did its review of our public transit program, or very pleased generally with our program, but made a couple minor suggestions. One was to refresh our, our governmental agreement with them, and specifically to highlight the coordination between the city and our MPO, which is known as DSAT around here, because there is, in addition to what DSAT does for street improvements of, of different varieties, there, there is a role that they play in also coordinating federal funding that comes for transit activities, and, and those are exclusively for the city of DeKalb, almost exclusively for the city of DeKalb. And so we've happily, and Mike Newen Kirchen, who's our transit manager, has put together some of the bullet points that are in your background tonight. Basically, we're gonna provide the DSAT's group that meets on a policy level and on an act, more action level every month. The, some programs and projects which will then be included in that process that, that works its way also back to the federal level, and that's identified for you here in the background. That, that's not, it, it's major in the sense that we want to continue to collaborate with the MPO, but it's not a list that we're gonna wrestle with. It's something we're already doing and will do religiously from here on.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero six passes. Number seven, Resolution two zero two-five dash zero zero seven, accepting the qualification-based selection of Wills, Burke, Kelsey Associates, WBK, to perform design engineering services for the intersection reconstruction project impacting North First Street and Sycamore Road, and authorizing the city engineer to provide approvals on all standard Department of Transportation selection documents. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Whenever we are contemplating, contemplating a project with considerable federal or state level involvement, we have to follow what's known as a QBS method of pre-qualifying engineering services. QBS is an acronym for quality, qualifications-based selection, and it, although it's not blind to pricing, it really focuses on past competence and qualifications in order to get on the list, so then you can bid on jobs that come up, and then obviously price comes more into play. And so it's not any secret to you, there, on the next page in your background, you see a whole page devoted to that particular project, and Zach Gill has tuned up to come up here and answer any questions about that. But this is to engage a firm which meets those QBS requirements, Wills, Burke, Kelsey Associates, which we have worked with in the past, to perform the design engineering services for the intersection reconstruction project that would impact North First Street and Sycamore Road. We ask your approval.
So we have the highly capable, insanely creative city engineer Zach Gill up here. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on a roundabout?
Yeah, I want to address a few basics.
To the project itself, before we enter into the qualification-based selection here for both the council and the public, this is first getting rolled out for the first time, so the basics I want to hit right away are gonna be funding, and the scope and nature of the project, and the timeline of such, real quick, and then we can get into any specifics. So the funding is probably most important that people want to know about. This is from the safe, Highway Safety Improvement Program. This is federal money that's administered by the state DOT. So it's important you know this isn't money that we could get for anything else, this isn't all in one big pot, this is because we have a qualifying project in their determination that I asked them to review, and that is a ninety-ten match for every aspect of the project, which is even unique. So from day one engineering all the way through the, the final end, it's a dime on a dollar for us that we get to bring into the community with this program. So that's the first thing. The nature of this program is based on crashes. It's, it's based on unsafe roadway use, usually because of poor geometry, visibility, things of different nature like that. So that's what we have here. We went back with five years of crash data, supplied that to the people that make the decisions, and they said this was a qualifying project, and that the roundabout was a very highly supported solution to this. So that's the nature of how we got to where we're at now. So the scope of this, it's more than just dropping a roundabout in there for fun and games. This actually is a deeper corridor review. We provided this image because you're not gonna be able to make heads or tails of some sheet that's, you know, three feet long, trying to put her on somewhere. So this is a nice little intersection focus part, but it will involve contemplating how First Street, as it goes north from Lincoln Highway, there'll be other adjustments along that will be reviewed. This is only at the conceptual level. This agreement is to start the engineering. This is when the funds start. So nothing is written in stone as to how or why we do this yet. We are just beginning the analysis. I expect this to be at least a two-year process before we even come to any sort of final layout for this. We will go back to the state, ask for more money to build it. They may give it to us right away, they may say you're in a queue. The earliest I see this coming to fruition, as in being open to the public, would be December of twenty-seven. We would maybe build it that summer. That's, if everything goes well in the interim process. Again, there may be things out of our control, other projects ahead of us in their estimation, and, and who knows when, when it gets built then, but this is how we start the process right now. So we will review that North First Street.[1764.33] the process right now. So we will review that North First Street. The real thrust is to get rid of that obnoxious and dangerous scenario of this kind of last-minute merge, unmerge, "I'm going there." "Where are you going?" "Well, I'm going this way," and, you know. And also, it is kind of gnarly to make that left right now. It's a very short green arrow time. You're making a very harsh turn across there to proceed if you're southbound on First Street on Sycamore Road. So these are some of the things we're trying to alleviate. The actual corridor part of it goes all the way to the bridge. Because this is safety money, I put in there to get a Hawk system. We don't have one yet in this community. The Hawk system is something you see maybe in a denser urban area. That's the literal masked arms over the road, full authority to bring a car to a halt at an illegal method that's actuated by a pedestrian. And I envision we align this with the pedestrian access to the Clinton Rosette School. We've had cursory discussions with some school district personnel. And so that would mean that none of the students would have to engage with anything on First Street until they get to that, have a fully actuated, red lights flash, and bring everyone to a halt, probably with the assistance of the crossing guard. But anyone, anyone out for a stroll with their dog on a Sunday evening can push the button and stop the cars as well and safely cross there. So it truly is a whole corridor vision along North First Street to improve, first of all, safety, but we'll also see some capacity issues improve greatly with the roundabout as well. One of the specific things you see that I dreamt up, and I guess they didn't think I was crazy, was if you've ever been around about, sometimes you'll see what we call a right slip lane. In fact, we have one in our roundabout down there, Peace and Gerler. If you're not engaging with the roundabout for another movement, you just make your right turn and you go. I said, why can't we have a through slip lane? So if you're southbound on First Street, you're never stopping again. You actually get a bypass of the intersection, and again, you're received by those dual lanes of First Street, southbound that we already have. So we actually have a huge increase in efficiency and remove of one conflicting movement from that. So that's kind of the nature of where we're at. It's infancy stage, but we're ready to start walking.
Counsel, Alderman Perkins first.
There's a lot of, if you look at the print, there's a lot of really, really great stuff going on in here. I mean, just the amount of different lanes and activity that are in there. More specifically, so what do you envision on First Street from Pine to the roundabout? So coming up to that intersection, it's a two-lane, right? And then, as it currently exists, it goes into a kind of a squirrely two-lane.
Yeah.
With one lane that goes away. So will it still be a two-lane south of Pine and Augusta then? And will that turn lane just go away? Is that the thought?
Right now, and again, there'll be a lot of what we call capacity analysis and running simulations on this, but off the cuff, what I envisioned is Augusta and Pine, as it intersects with North First, what is now the inner-through lane will become a dedicated left-turn lane. So people in that will be queued up, waiting to make their left onto Augusta, and that's the only use of that lane. So, and that's why I speak about Lincoln Highway. When you're approaching Lincoln Highway from the south, right, you come over the tracks, and you saw we took away that two-lane portion as part of the Lincoln Highway reconfiguration that we did. So you're already in a single-lane queue. So we need to really contemplate and look at traffic. As people proceed across Lincoln Highway, do we want to open them back up in their two lanes, or are we looking at just having some supporting turn lanes and queues? And essentially, when you're on North First Street through town, it's a single lane, you know, northbound pretty much the whole way. And we do see some efficiencies in that, like with downtown, everyone said, well, we're taking away lanes. Yeah, but you're also taking away conflict and indecision of a person stopping. You're waiting behind someone that's got a left-turn blinker on, but yet you've got five people behind them wanting to go straight, trying to bail out, trying to do this and that, that when you give people a little bit more conformity through that, you actually move more efficiently. So we'll review all that. But that's, what I envision is that's probably an actual raised median north of Pine. So it's just a very extended splitter island for the roundabout.
That's one of the things that caught my eye. That's a really cool concept, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, by the time you get to Pine, you should know what you're doing with your life, right? I'm either going left onto Augusta, or I'm going north to go through town. And so, yeah.
Alderman Sisada?
So we're, so one, there's going to be no light at this.
No.
Okay. And then, where do most of the accidents happen?
The most of the accidents are twofold. One, it's either people trying to do that merge, being uncertain, getting biffed out, because then you get biffed out into oncoming traffic, because you've got nowhere to be. If you're not the one that won the battle to get into that condensed lane.
It sucks every time.
You are facing oncoming traffic, or you're facing a fire hydrant or telephone pull up over the curb. And the other one, again, is that southbound left, which, again, is about a, you know, 75-degree corner you're making. I mean, you're going like all the way around there. So some of that, that's a very short signal timing right now that needs to be for the other movements. And so I think people are kind of racing to get through those. People are uncertain whose turn it is, and people are getting a nice crack there. So we do have, the severity of crashes comes into account when they look at that highway safety, and we met that trigger. If we didn't meet that trigger, they would have told me, nice knowing you, but we did. So.
Any other comments?
One other thing, too, kind of segueing a bit. The work here is great, and getting the state to throw in and help on it is awesome. And I understand it's a longer play thing. Is there any way we can copy this type of work at 23 and Perry Road, south of DeKalb?
Oh, at that new intersection?
Well, it's one where we've had some catastrophic accidents over the years. Because I know there have been a lot of different things we've talked about.
Oh, Perry Road.
Perry Road, yeah. Perry Road, all the way south out there. And I know there's complexity and overlap of different groups. You know, it's a state highway, it's a county highway, where our police and fire are out there.
Yeah.
There was an accident. But I guess what I'm really asking is, is there any way we could start a ball rolling like this for a real solution, you know, better than just changing lights again?
I think we would.
And it's a step, but this is, this is a really creative thing. It engages a lot of different entities.
Yeah. I'll have to use my least favorite sentence. That's outside of my jurisdiction. So I can't directly impact that, but we could be very supportive of our partners, which, yes, would be Perry Road, or be county highway jurisdiction, and then obviously 23 is the state. Specifically, you cannot use highway safety improvement money on the state highway. Kind of a good way, right, to take themselves out of competition. We have to use that on our local roads, because I explored using HSIP at 38 in Peace, and I was told I couldn't apply it on a state highway. So similarly, that would come with us behind the scenes, supporting those agencies, trying to get them to make some advancements. I did see they bought something for signage. I did see that come across in the DSAT's tip. Does not change the geometrics of it. I think what you're concerned with is those high-velocity strikes of the north and south on the main line. That's really going to, honestly, that would be.
I think what we're doing is incremental.
Yeah.
And it's good. I'm just not convinced it's enough.
I would recommend, and you know, I can speak offline, but I think would be us speaking with the head of geometrics at the local agency, which is in Ottawa. It would ultimately be their call. I have a relationship with that person. I'm happy to start a discussion if there's any way.
Again, if we can copy some of the homework that was done on, if you're around 47, up, you know, 47 between Elgin and St. Charles, there are multiple roundabouts in there. And it had to be a similar set of issues. You know, it's a state highway, that the same issues present themselves, I guess. And I just, I know it's not something that's going to take care of itself quickly, but, you know, if we could do.
We would have to drive the conversation with those agencies in control. They may have plans. I mean, you know, I'm not privy to, you know, they may have a longer rollout that they have safety improvements that they want to do. But, yeah, let's have the conversation. Never hurts.
Great.
Alderman Powell?
What does that do for the traffic over there, like as far as the surrounding lights and the school, the buses, and everything else right there?
Well, a roundabout is going to have significantly higher capacity. They're much more efficient. So it should improve. And I know that some people, there's still a lack of comfortability that can cause some hesitation, but by and large, if people get ingrained to its use, the traffic should improve, particularly when you're talking about, I'm not sure how the vehicles all exit. I think they actually exit further east on Sycamore Road, but obviously, again, the familiarity is, you're yielding if there's people on your left. So if people are coming from the school and looking to get onto Sycamore Road, they would be making that dominant movement there through. So you wouldn't have the issue of, oh, here's six cars with a queue, stop and wait for one. Here's, you know, we rely on that efficiency of driver decision-making and that open-flow concept. So should get better. Yep. And obviously, it will be designed, I mean, buses, everything will be able to fit through it. That won't be an issue. Yeah.
Others? Great idea, Zach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, someone? Powell?
Just me.
Oh, City Manager.
Sorry. I just wanted to say, Mayor and Counsel, that I'm excited by this prospect. I am a regular user of this particular corridor. And I would say, this is conservatively, that there isn't a day that I travel going either northbound or southbound that I don't see some creative rules of the road.
Yeah, totally.
And I am concerned, and many times I've been hung out there to dry and facing oncoming traffic, because I can't yield, I can't merge, and no one will yield. So I think this is a good thing. I'm delighted that we've got such a creative city engineer, and appreciate his work.
But people are so kind in that merge process, welcoming you to take in, come into their lane. All right, thanks. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2025-007 passes. Number eight, resolution 2025-008, authorizing an agreement for services with Wills Burke Kelsey Associates to perform design engineering services for the intersection reconstruction project impacting North First Street and Sycamore Road for $420,000 and appropriating $42,000 of local funds. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And so continuation of what we've just been discussing, this is the actual contract. And as Zach Gill mentioned, we will be on the hook for approximately 10% of this. We recommend your approval.
Any other comments or questions on this topic? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2025-008 passes. Moving on to agenda item K, ordinances, second reading, we have none. Agenda item L, ordinances, first reading. Number one, ordinance 2025-001, approving a special-use permit for antennas and associated communication equipment for the property at 1500 South 7th Street, Mastech, for AT&amp;T Mobility. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a representative for the petitioner, Ariel. Is that you? Okay, nice to see you. Thanks for coming tonight, and thanks for being patient. So the background is pretty straightforward. We have an existing, not we, the city, but there is an existing lattice tower at 1500 South 7th Street. And the proposal is to hang nine antennas on the existing tower about 200 feet above the ground, and also to add some associated ground equipment. It won't be a very large footprint, about 15 feet by 30 feet, much of which is just an area that's encompassing the proposed shed with a, that holds the ground equipment, with a fence and some landscaping on the outside of it. This had been through the plan commission. The plan commission recommended your approval by a vote of four to zero, and we support their recommendation.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2025-001 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Comments or questions on that, Counsel?
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2025-001. Moving on to number two, ordinance 2025-002, approving a plat of easement vacation, vacation, and a plat of roadway dedication for the property located at 1240 Normal Road, Dr. Leroy Mitchell Elementary School. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisada, seconded by Alderman Powell. I'm still on this vacation thing. It's all how you pronounce it, I guess. Vacation, I guess. City Manager.
I know where my mind just was. Okay, so the graphic here, I think, illustrates the area we're talking about. It's about a tenth of an acre in area. It's an area that many years ago was part of the public school system, and then when the old Robert School was sold to NIU, it became an NIU property. And it's going to be, if you approve this, dedicated back for roadway purposes under the auspices of, again, the public school system. This is part of the plan that was approved last year, earlier in the year, before the dedication of the school for the effective and efficient release of some of the traffic from that site at the end of school in particular. And the plat is in order, and it's been reviewed by staff, and we recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions or comments on this one? Alderman Smith?
I'm putting on wise if I didn't ask us. Bill, what's the traffic flow? We did a projected traffic count. Sorry.
That was done, you know, about a year ago, and we talked about that when we brought that whole plat of the school addition, the school, the new school, and the additional parking and so forth. And there, this is, obviously, it bleeds on a pretty quiet street, but we talked about that at the time. Zach was confident that the flow would be regular at certain times of the day for a short period of time. And so, nothing has been added to the development on the site to change that prognosis.
I guess what concern was brought to me is like left turns out of there, Zach, on the garden without a four-way or not. I mean, as you get down, or, I mean, is traffic going to back up?
There will be, I would imagine, one of two things. So the reason we did this, just to go back a little bit, is we did not want to have both the entry queue to the school and the exiting traffic both on normal within close proximity to each other. We see examples of that on 13th, at Little John, things like that, when you send them all to the same place at the same time. So that divergence was kind of the focus of this. So I guess we'd have to know the origin and destination of each one. They may whip on Kimberley because they're trying to go back, and they live west of the school, and they're dropping a child off. If they're going somewhere else in town, I imagine they would just continue to Hillcrest and avail themselves of Hillcrest then to continue on where they're going at in the return trip. The dedication, this is actually just a paperwork thing, right? We're doing this dedication. There's a resident who has a driveway that lets out onto that section of what appears to be existing street right now. In the process, it came to light that that's actually school district property. There was no actual cross-access easement. There was no rights. And we simply said, we're more comfortable with the resident having a driveway on a public city street. So it's just a paperwork thing of saying, well, the street's legally this much further. That way, we plow it, so they can come and go on a regular plowing schedule, and so on and so forth, and have equal public access rights to the driveway. That's the main reason for this small little piece.
I guess I was after, you've done your due diligence on this, and we really work to balance, if you will, the traffic flow, so it's not on all, any one singular road. Oh, excuse me.
Correct. And the exiting, the reason we went with this alignment is the exiting traffic is much less chaotic than the entering traffic, right? They're queuing up until they can drop off a child. Once they're dropped off, they're doing regular, they're, you know, I mean, they're not waiting to do business, drop off their child. They're, I'm done, go, make my turn, make my turn. You know, we don't anticipate, like with the pre-drop-off portion, where they're stacked, they're queued up along the side of the road, they're doing whatever. So this should be pretty rapid when they're done with their business in front of the school and they're gone.
Thank you.
Should also be noted that they have two choices when they come out of the school site now.
Alderman Larson?
I just remember when we were talking about this last time. There's some kind of a walkway from the school that goes through the houses. Is, that's not that easement that comes off the end of that pavement?
No.
It's farther up by the school, right?
That has no relation to that at all. Yeah, and that piece of the walkway, I believe, was excluded. I'm not sure if these are the most, right? But that was the understanding with the school.
It's off this graphic. It's further to the north.
Yeah, they, yeah, they, yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2025-002 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions on waiving second reading? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
in Commander McNabb's retirement ceremony, which, Chief, you did a great job running that. Your comments were phenomenal. And the turnout to support our commander leaving was great. And it was good to see his family there. So that was just an overall cool experience and looking forward to the next generation of leaders coming in.
All right.
Outside of that, City Manager, you got anything?
No report.
All right. Then, moving on to agenda item N, executive session, we have none. And so agenda item O, adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. Before I say all in favor, Happy New Year, everybody. If 2025 or anything like 2024, we're going to have a really good year. So looking forward to working with staff, the public, and everyone. It's going to be awesome. All right. To adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. We are adjourned.